At this time, I will call the order of the internal session. This is your board of education meeting Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017. Time is now seven thirty-nine. The members of the board and all board members of the present, with the exception of Teresa Montague, who will not come today. One point zero three, motion for the zero two second session. Shockingly, we do not have one or any voting to approve for this session. So skip one point zero four, one point zero five, risk assessment. So here we are, pledge allegiance, one point zero six. The chief, if you would.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right, one point zero seven, this will be the audit committee, the audit committee report. We have present today Martini from New York and Councilor.
Very good.
For our internal auditors. So he'll present the report, receive the popular report, he'll present the report, talk about it. If anybody has any questions. So if you would. Or speak loud.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us lead the internal audit for the school district during the year. So what do you have tonight? I believe they have both of them, right? So you have two reports tonight. You have one on payroll and human resources that we, you know, did back in 2016, and then you have the update for the risk assessment that we just did recently for this year. So just to familiarize board members that you might not sure what the function, the internal audit function is. Every school district, unless you're really small, you're required to have an internal audit every year. What that means is you have to do a risk assessment update, which is what we're going over tonight. You have to pick an area that we're going to choose, which you don't have to choose tonight, but we have to choose soon for this current year. Last year, we did payroll, so you have to pick some for this year, which requires testing of that particular internal audit area. And then we have to give you a report. You have to have a report, at least annually, to report on whatever internal audit area you pick. So basically, three phases. So for, I guess, first I'll go over real quickly, check the payroll report and human resources. And so what we did here is, this was the internal audit area that the district chose last year to go through. And you can see, you know, I'll go through very quickly. If you have questions, please stop me. I'd be more than happy to discuss the questions that you have. You can see, though, on the first page, we classify all the risks into either, for the area, into either unsatisfactory, acceptable, or satisfactory. Very few areas in any school district you audit can be satisfactory. You know, it sounds like, oh, everybody should be satisfactory, but that means we really had no recommendations and everything's perfect, and, you know, we could sublet the perfect world. So generally, acceptable is what most school districts, and we get from most areas, unless it's really bad, and we have an unsatisfactory mark. So we gave the payroll area acceptable, because we had some recommendations for improvement. Nothing that was, you know, wrong, there's no misappropriations. I don't want to give you the idea that we found anything really wrong. But we, there is improvement, and we gave you the recommendations in this report. So if you look through, you know, what we were trying to do on the bottom of page one, going on to page two, I won't bother reading all the areas, but it kind of tells you what we were trying to do, like, for instance, to ensure policy and procedures, provide for the safeguard of district resources, to ensure the policy and procedures provide for timely, accurate accounting of payroll, of transactions, okay, so forth. So that's kind of the gist of what we were trying to do, to agree upon procedures with the district. So then, our first binding is, do you want me to go by finding by finding, or have you read this already? I don't know if you want me to go item by item.
I do, I do other.
Anybody need to go finding by finding, or do you want?
No?
No. They have questions, but I didn't respond.
Okay, yeah, so what you can see, though, is, what the report is, is we have findings, recommendations, and then, at least in this one version, I don't know if you have the version, but we do have, the district responses included into the latest version. So you're free to look at it from the white. We're fine with district responses. You know, some things they said, you know, the management said that they would make the changes we recommended, some they said, hey, you know what? Even though it's not a bad recommendation, we're happy with the way we're doing things, and we're fine with that, and we're not going to make the change. But that's okay. You know, it's just recommendations. So, but that's all included in the report here. Okay? So that, so this will be, if you want to say, phase three for last year. So now, moving on, was there any questions on the payroll and human resources?
I just have a general question. I'm sorry. Is that too many more for admin?
We received an email this afternoon, and I just don't know what changed this afternoon that we got, and other posting. So we did the same document that was posted yesterday. So we got another board doc. Which one?
There was a typo in the memo that was sent out last Thursday, so we corrected that today, and that's all it is. No changes to this change, just a typo.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, moving along. So for this year, we just did the risk assessment update. And as I said before, that's like phase one that you have to do every year. So we did the updates for the district. And what we do is, we basically, as we look through the report, we pick seventeen areas that we kind of do every year. We can always, if management or the board so feels they want to add an area to this that we haven't put in our assessment, we can always do that next year. But there's seventeen broad areas, anywhere from payroll, purchasing, accounts receipts, transportation, and so forth, are all included here. And what we do is, we give these risk, these areas, three different assessments. We give to either a low, moderate, or high-risk area. Now, some areas, just to give you the background, even if you have rate controls, let's say payroll, you have rate controls. Payroll, by nature, high-buying transactions, and a lot of districts, just a high-meth area, it's going to be inherently a high-risk area. So we're going to give it a high-risk area, even though you may have rate controls. So just throwing that out there. So just because we call something as high-risk, doesn't mean you have made a problem there, because it's just inherently high-risk. Purchasing is one of those areas, payrolls, another area. So if you flip through to page four, I believe, page four, you see where we start with the seventy different areas. And you can see, we give you what the previous risk assessment was. Most stayed the same. If it was moderate originally, you know, last year, it was still moderate. One or two changed, but pretty much the same. So if you go through, you can see governance, control environment, strategic planning, you know, as they go down through the pages. And then when you get on, kind of through the items, when you get to the next page, you know, we kind of summarize the areas. We had six areas that we consider high-risk. And again, not to be redundant, but they're high-risk because they're kind of inherently high-risk. So even though you might have good controls in some of these areas, they're going to be inherently high-risk. Cash receipts, purchasing, accounts payable, cash disbursements, payroll, they're all high-risk areas, inherently high-risk, regardless of how good the controls are. Fixed assets, we also include, because this is major dollars for the district. You have a lot of walkable items like laptops, so that's kind of considered a high-risk area usually. And extracship activities, just by the nature of what goes on, there are a lot of different cash activities going on. Students involved, classifieds involved, so therefore, that's usually considered a high-risk area as well. So now, so what the purpose of this report does, it kind of tells you, from our standpoint, you know, we're, like, the board, or the audit committee, in this case, it's the board, right? The audit committee and the board are in the same area. So it'll be your decision what areas you want to choose as high-risk, or choose as the internal audit area for the year. Okay? My recommendation, or our recommendation, is that as the internal auditors, since you did payroll last year, probably purchasing would be a good choice next. But it doesn't have to be. It could be any one of these six items that we mentioned, or something in addition, that you just feel, you know, if you feel like transportation or school lunch was really important, maybe you can choose that instead. But purchasing being such a high-dollar figure, high-buying activity, and just a source of misappropriation anywhere, we kind of recommend purchasing probably is a area to look at. But it's just our recommendation, it's up to you to make the proper decision there.
Good question. Can I see your copy? Please. I don't know if this was distributed to the board. I have not seen this document. I don't know if anybody else has. I don't know, anybody else has a copy?
I have copies to give you if you don't have. I thought you had them.
No, that's why, I meant, I have not seen them.
Anybody else, nobody else has a document?
Unless I missed it on board docs, but...
I'm looking on the record.
No?
With regards to purchasing, when was the last time that that was looked at?
Well, we never looked at it, but I think Teresa was telling me it was about ten years ago, I think. It's been more than ten years.
More than ten years. Okay. Your last time actually was looked at, State of New York, over ten years.
Yeah, especially, I'll give you a few moments if you'd like to look at the report, but you can always reach me, whether Teresa or directly, you can always reach me to ask questions after this evening.
Yeah, what I would recommend to the board is the opportunity to look this information over, not make a decision right now, on what we want to do. Perhaps we can revisit this discussion at the next meeting, you know, five-minute conversation with public all tapes. But I would certainly like the opportunity to look through this, to make a, you know, to make an effective decision.
I apologize if this wasn't, I thought it was, probably my mistake, so I apologize.
I agree with Matt.
Have a question?
Yeah, Monica.
It's, you know, my attention to the boards where you've been, recommendations for the district responded, that some of them may not be something that the district wants carry on with. And anyone give us an example of a situation where a recommendation is not going to be followed?
Yeah, I can tell you. For example, the way that they wanted us to put some of the employee benefit deductions, they wanted us to put it in the play benefit file. Payroll felt that they get more questions and concerns where they could go back to the payroll date, it would be much easier for them. They could always grab it from the file, they know, they could look up the date, might take a couple extra minutes. But for them, because most of the questions come that way, they want to fill in the date. So it's nothing major or anything, but it just, it just makes it easier for them to work.
And you don't have any issue with that?
No, no. That's really just the...
This is procedural.
And, you know, we can get the information, but just, like, for us, when we're coming in through the, that original audit, it was hard to include the documentation, though all documentation was located.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to have a vision.
Question. You've got previous and current assessments on here? Courage is obviously now.
Right.
Previous...
Last year.
Is just last year. So last year...
Because that last year was the first year.
Created moderate, today it's low. It may not even be an area that you looked at, but, you know, or even an area that you're recommending, it may not be a high-risk area.
Right.
But you've seen some improvement just over the course of a year's worth of doing business?
Yeah, yeah, this is me, to know the district. The one that you're referring to...
State.
A financial accounting report, yes.
We felt that, you know, everything was being done well in the district, that Teresa was doing a good job with the department, and, you know, we felt comfortable making that low. But on the other hand, on the next page, we did move your fixed assets to high. Maybe it should have been high last year. Nothing really dramatically changed, but we just felt, because you don't do a fixed asset, you don't do an inventory of fixed assets each year, and we hadn't done it before, so that's why we just...
So just so you know, in 2014, we had fixed assets audit by CBIZ, who's a company that the state lets us bring in every five years. So we thought of that, I'm sure that was, maybe it was moderate or low, but this year, because we, obviously, we don't have an annual assessment, or, you know, they won't pay for it, and they won't give state on it, that we don't have that every year, so it'll go up high. But that might be something we might look at in the future, but please, when we talked about it, we just had that inventory, so we're going to, a lot of times, we're going to look at it.
And as we're thinking about these for the next risk assessment meeting, is it too much to ask us to just have an idea of when was the last time that these areas were audited? So we don't, like, three years in pro for the last four years, versus this one, Jeff, if that's not too much?
No, I have that.
Thank you. Do you have a question? No?
Okay.
Is there anything else?
No.
With respect to the recommendation, and then at least for next year, I know there is a recommendation by Admin, correct? Regarding purchasing. And I think that was, what you were saying, was your recommendation of the top?
Right, it doesn't have to be, but I think it just makes sense.
It actually was something, we came up, Dr. Adams and I, and we discussed, and we actually came up with that independently, because it hadn't been done in such a long time, and because it is such high-buying. This is where your dollars are, you know? Your dollars are in payroll, your dollars are in purchasing, cash disbursements, but that was something that was, you know, that was not done that long ago. So...
The cash disbursements was done?
It hasn't been done either, but it's just, we have some turnover here, so I figured, let's wait a year until we know, you know, we have people, it's hard for them to interview people that aren't here anymore, you know, so, you know, it'd be easier once we had somebody under our belt for a year.
And just to throw out, too, what we do, some districts, we do it just purchasing, other districts have a look at, like, the whole group, purchasing, accounts, payment, cash disbursements, at the same time. You know, so, I mean, it's not like this is written in stone, you have to go exactly by this, or, you know, if you wanted to mix those two, like, in the era of nine and ten, you could mix them both nine and ten together, but, or you could just do nine by itself, or ten by itself.
And last time, we were saying it was ten years later?
More than ten years.
More than.
I'm saying, when the State of New York came in, they were actually the last team that we did our purchasing. I don't think we've ever had an internal audit on purchasing, so it seemed like a good idea. See, if you get the reports from our claims auditor, sometimes you have some issues with after the date, and so, like, well, that's really something we should tighten up and look at, and that's why I thought about that.
And what was your second choice?
We talked about fixed assets, but then we realized it was only a couple of years ago. We talked about school lunch as well, something you want to look at, but those are smaller than, fixed assets are very large dollars, although a lot of are, you know, there are things, like Mark's saying, you have laptops, you have libraries, you have a ton of that now, so those things are big. School lunch is a small amount of money. We've done extraclass several times, we did that a couple of years ago. Payroll and human resources, we've done many, many, many times. We did athletics, you know? We've done things that are a little bit out of the box as well, so. We did a hardware inventory with our internal audit meeting four or five years ago. So we, you know, I have a list, I can provide it, but we've done most of the big areas, it's just we bought purchasing, something we really haven't looked at at all.
Yeah, I'm surprised they've done that time, I've looked at that long, but...
And truth to say, sorry. I was just going to say, who to say that we can't do more than one? That we can't do purchasing and school? You know, a big one and a small one?
Well, that's, usually, I think you do something that kind of loops together, right? You see what...
Well, I mean, if you've got something that's small, it doesn't take a lot of, a lot of resources.
I mean, this doesn't help you answer your question, but you're required to have one area done a year. You can have as many areas as you want. Ideally, when they wrote this, they preferred you to have an internal audit that are retired full-time on staff. You know, your district, you deal with, does that. So you can go anywhere from having, you know, a lot of areas, like, I'm doing an area now for another school district, they've got three different areas that they chose for this year. Because they only did one, and they asked her, they said, pick three totally different areas. So you can pick just one area, or you can pick multiple areas, you know? It's a report.
I mean, the cost of...
Well, there's a cost per area.
Obviously, you can do every area, but for that...
It's not like buy one, get one free.
You want to choose this?
Of course, we do have an external audit. And of course, external audit looks at school lunch, federal funds, capital funds. They look at all our funds, but this is just more in-depth thing to look at. Where our external auditor might come and grab ten or fifteen purchase orders, they're going to grab a lot more, you know, they're going to be more in-depth, you know? And like, that's another thing with cash disbursements, you've got to remember, we have a claims auditor now that goes through every single... Remember cash disbursements. So I don't feel like all the risk there for us is, I would say, most of it is that large, because, you know, nothing goes out the door without the order signing up on it, so.
Okay, so, and based upon the present, well, really, the audit plans here, and what we have been auditing, or have audited over the last however many years, Admin is recommending purchasing, correct? Okay. So if the board wants to, I mean, that's what their recommendation is, if the board wants to put that over and, and then talk about it, would that be an issue if it's, if it's, we wrote on it in two weeks? I don't know if it's going to change for purchasing?
No, but, no, it's not an issue, it's the later, you want to try to have it before the thirtieth, and so, we have other things to be scheduled, so the sooner you get to it, the better, but two weeks is already.
Okay, so I don't know, I mean, I have no issue with purchasing, because, you know, obviously, Admin's recommending it, the auditor's recommending it. But if you want to put it over for another meeting, you know, we can vote for purchasing for that.
Will the decision change depending on this document?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is the only thing we're deciding on is whether to research and look at or audit purchasing? That's the only decision, or...
The only thing we're deciding on is what to audit next.
Right.
Recommendation by the auditor, and recommendation by administration is to audit purchasing.
What if people still have, you know, questions about this document?
They still ask questions anytime, but this, because this is this year's document, necessarily.
So we're talking about it every year. Do you have any issue with recommending purchasing and still giving time for this document?
I...
I don't have a chance to, I just, I might have to tie what we're voting on.
I mean, look, ninety-five percent chance that we're going to go purchasing, and I agree with that. However, I still feel as though, you know, there's due diligence in reviewing this document that, you know, we just got. So if everybody else feels that they're comfortable and want to go with purchasing, then I'll agree with that.
I mean, I know, I kind of touched on a little bit even last year, kind of what we would be auditing, and people may not, you may not be in your place, but what we would be auditing over the next, actually, few years. So it's not necessarily a surprise to them. So I don't consider it a issue. What I'll do is, we'll just continue on, when I get to that point, we'll call the vote, and...
Is there any questions on this document that we just got today? How do we pursue that? How do you, how do you pursue that?
Yeah, I was going to say, Teresa?
You can send it to me, and then I'll forward it to Mark, you know, something I can answer.
Okay. All right. All right, so it may be purchasing, and...
I'll read there.
I'll see you down there.
That's great.
All right. Any other questions then? And once again, you can follow up with any questions you have afterwards, or whatnot. Any questions now? No? All right, thank you. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'll wait for your consent.
All right, so, all right, so this is now, one point zero eight is the public hearing on the proposed 2017-18 budget. So what I will do at this time, Craig?
I don't, if we're doing the public hearing, I'm not, you know, we...
Public hearing for the proposed 2017-18 budget. I think Anthony is going to give a brief presentation with respect to budget for next year. Basically, during this process, after Mr. Fisher does his presentation, the public can get up and speak as to the budget, and make comment as to the budget. It's not, again, it's not necessarily back and forth, it's a public hearing. Okay, so the mic is...
Well, again, we presented this one that was adopted a few weeks ago. Just as a, you know, big picture, our budget is projected to go up around two, a little over two percent. As with most public schools, the largest amount of the budget goes into salaries and benefits. We have a breakout here that'll be part of the Excel series that's mailed to each home. It carries with it a 1.21 percent increase in the tax levy, which is really what the voters are now voting on. In some ways, this public hearing is kind of anachronistic. It used to be that before the budget was adopted, there was public hearing. So the public's input can obviously be brought into the discussion. So they kept that on the books, even though they, it's having to be between seven and fourteen days, even though the budget has to be decided thirty days before. So, again, it's kind of an anachronistic level that's still in place. But be that as it may, this is the time for the public to speak of the budget, they will ultimately speak as part of the vote. And again, what is at risk with any vote now is, we are unable to increase the tax levy, unless we do get a positive vote, it didn't use to be that way. So really, that, the increase in the levy is a little over 1,289,000. So that's really the authority we're looking for from our voters. And there will be two other propositions on the ballot this year. One, to expend money that was previously approved in the capital reserve, to the tune of $1.7 million for two purposes, air handlers at the high school, and also generators at our two secondary schools and district office. And proposition number three will be to allow us to establish a new capital reserve over the next ten years, to be funded, not to exceed $10 million. Also, ultimately, the voters will speak on those expenditures as we wish to make them over that ten-year period. So, that, just go over it up.
That's it, huh? Does anybody have any comment in respect to the project for 2017? Okay, I think I'll write, I think we do, okay. And again, this isn't the first time we presented it, we've been there, we had, you know, a bunch of workshops, the public's been there, and what have you, maybe even bigger crowd than today.
Yes.
But, okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if this comes...
I'll move.
Thank you. Craig?
So sad.
Move to pose the public hearing. Craig, Clark? Ballot's in favor?
I have.
No objections?
I am.
No objections?
I am.
Sue in the court?
I'm not.
Oh. All right, all right, all right. Minutes, one point one zero, minutes of regular meeting of April 18, 2017. Chairman's table, which will accept those in the house stated. Craig?
I'll keep closing. It wasn't here.
You're right here.
Although, I still can procedurally.
You technically can.
And that's not...
Okay, so Craig? You're going to have to hold on there.
That's fine.
Craig, Clark, second. All in discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, phone, discussions.
I'll stay.
One of the sessions.
In my absence.
Okay, Dr. Adams, no comments. Okay, public participation, this is public participation as to action items, only those are the items that are right up on the board there, two point zero one, two point one five. The session will last thirty minutes. Step up to the microphone, if it's working, say your name, school affiliation, and address your remarks to the chair. I'd just like to remind you, suing the policy, 1230, 1430, 240, please don't make any comment regarding any particular employee or steward of the district. Okay, saying none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. All right, action items. I'm going to pull two point zero four and two point zero eight. I haven't been asked to pull any other items, so I would like to use a consensus agenda with respect to the balance.
I'll move.
Okay, so that's two point zero one to two point zero three, two point zero five, two point zero seven, two point zero nine, and two point one five. Craig, Clark, second. Any discussion? Ballot's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, extended? None, thank you. Okay, so two point zero four, that's 2016-17 internal audit. Chairman's table, which will accept two point zero four associated?
I'll move.
Craig, Clark?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Would you raise your hand if...
Ken, again, on what's included in each before our vote, please, thank you.
I'm sorry, no, we...
I need to look on what's posted under each item.
Under two point zero four?
And eight.
Okay, we're doing two point zero four. Any comment on two point zero four? Any discussion on two point zero four?
I'm seeing for time.
On two point zero four?
Yes, both, thank you. Thank you.
Any other comment? Matt?
The resolution that was up, is there, is there a copy, is there a copy available? Just going to give a...
The resolution... It's right here, that's what I'm looking at.
Can I read it?
Yeah, it says, "Resolved that the board of education hereby accepts the recommendation of New York and Council of PC to audit purchasing due to their significance to the overall expenditure of the district."
I just could remember how it was worded.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to hear it.
Okay. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Two nays.
And just a slight.
And four ayes.
And just a player by the negative, so that you have more time to review the document and also to know what was recently on it as well.
Okay, and you can follow up if you want to follow up, too, of course. All right, so two point zero, wait, no, two point zero eight, sorry. Two point zero eight, Chairman's table, which will accept two point zero eight, as so stated. Craig, Clark?
I'll second it.
All right, discussion?
Yes.
Matt?
I just have two quick questions. The catchphrase, if you just want, just for thought. I just have two quick questions, for the catch receivables, just for clarification.
Mr. Page, Matt, can you just refer to anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, well, the second page, or the first page, depending on how you, on how you read it, the seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for other compensation for loss.
That's the, the N.
Okay, that's, that's our, okay. And then the hundred four thousand received for field trips, where did that come from?
That's all Washington, all that, that's what it says, is Washington, Boston, and that, get paid for by the students.
And that's that much revenue?
Yes, Washington, that's not revenue, it's going to go out, just the way I have to report, yes.
That's all, that's it, just all of it all.
Any other questions? Monty? No? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, abstentions? Announced. Sorry. Craig, I didn't receive a quote for advocacy, are you?
I second.
You're lying to get it. Okay, so three point zero one advocacy. Did you email?
Obviously. Been since the meeting is very short, this is very long, sorry, I'll try to go through it, Alex C. Comely met on April twentieth in Hillburn, and our three board members were present, as well as five members of the community, representing teachers, parents, and current teachers. We were joined by Senator, State Senator Jacob Calucci, and District Representative Patrick Sheen. Senator Calucci was very generously, you know, taking the time to know what we're advocating for and also talking about what he's pushing for in the Senate. He started off by thanking us for, as a district, for leading the way on the tax collection bill. He obviously sponsored the bill again in the Senate with the edits that were requested or advised by the governor, I don't know if my mic can hear it that well. So, so basically, he would like us to advocate, obviously, for what we started off with, because the bill is back on the governor's desk, or should be coming to his desk shortly, particularly pushing through the state organizations like MISBA and ISID, ISID, it's, you know, State PTA, and also the State Superintendent Organization. So this is time to just sort of advocacy all over, so that hopefully the bill passes this time, the sensibility of it, it's clear that, you know, school districts should have the choice. And he's also sponsoring another tax collection related bill, I wrote the number there for you, it's S four zero eight one, it has to do with allowing payment of property taxes online, which makes a lot of sense, I don't see why not, but you can see if we want to support that. He advocated also for an increase in the foundation aid, obviously that's all set already, and they know about our foundation aid, he feels our district should have gotten more money in terms of foundation aid, nevertheless, he's hopeful that momentum to continue to increase foundation aid for districts will continue on no hand concerns about loss of revenue from, to the state, from the federal government in terms of the Florida Book and Act, if it gets repealed, and also if the loss of revenue that we hear about in education, although small, but it will still affect the money that we all get. We address possible legislature to allow school districts to fund programs, so if Adam's had brought up this concern, that certain programs that our students steer ahead here in Ramco are not possible to support with funding because of the regulations, and he took interest right away in that, and he would be happy to support legislature, so if he needs more information, if you work together on advocating for that, legislature, thank you, but also said that he might be able to fund or support with some temporary funding in the meantime, so I think we should tap into that and consider trying to get some funding, he supported other districts that way, more recently, I think Austin. He's also supporting consolidation of UPK funding, because he's said the UPK programs have been challenging for districts to run, we informed him that we are rolling an UPK, sorry, UPK program in Ramco, and he's expressed willingness to also support that initiative, so we can definitely contact his office on that item. And he's putting legislature regarding star programs to insist that people get their star checks on time, and with a September deadline, September thirtieth, I mean, if people don't get their star check by that date, there would be interest accruing on a daily basis of three percent, so I think people would be excited to support that legislature, and also wants some index eligibility for the star and the enhanced star to be reconsidered, so that's what he's working on as well. And he's good at recovering high schools, this is a major topic across Rockland and the state of New York, he mentioned thirty-five Oakley-related deaths in Rockland only in the last year, the numbers are unfortunately on the rise, inspired by our can and other measures that are being implemented. Recovery high schools just explained are schools that would be a step down from a treatment facility before students and youth are ready to go into a regular high school, currently there are only two of those across the state, I think, sorry.
There you go.
Did I write two? Yes, and he is advocating for increasing those schools and funding them, sounds like a great idea. There will be a movie coming to Lafayette, actually, in October, we'll advise that a little bit more when we get to the phone, that's sponsored by the Rockland Council for alcoholism and other drug dependence, so he's, he's supporting that as well. There was a community member who asked the Senator a question regarding legislature to prevent bullying on school property as well as cyberbullying that continues beyond school property, he expressed how difficult that area is to legislate, basically, but said he would be happy to work on, you know, our district if we find this as a good advocacy area, again, that's up to the board to decide. The other hand, he is co-sponsoring with Senator Hamilton, I wrote the bill number, and it's to impose on the New York State Education Department to actually implement programs that are for suicide prevention specifically, which a lot of districts want to do these programs, but don't have anything coming from ISID to support it, so he wants a bill that will impose on the Education Department to roll down programs for suicide prevention. He's also pushing a bill against George Gauje, prescription drugs, and in response to a question that we, that someone asked, he stated that he strongly got tax vouchers, he doesn't think it was a current topic this year, and thinks it's been utilized as a publicity, you know, political being type of topic, we're obviously glad that it's not a topic this year. In response to another question regarding transportation costs, and I think this is important and relevant, he, he states that some districts are getting reimbursed at a higher rate than our district is for transportation out of district, so he would like to work with the district on possibly advocating for a better reimbursement for our out-of-district transportation, so that's all the report, and you can follow up on that. He did note of the House HR six ten, which is the Choices in Education Act, he also was not very aware of that act and took note of that, we discussed with him, the name change application, he's also willing to write a letter in support of a name change, so that's a big deal. So he's interested on going down with the district, and I think that was kind of a good opening for that to continue and to be all year round and not just meeting to meetings, it's the first time he's come to our district to meet with us and found it important, so that's, we're actually thrilled with it, but must add anything to that. I think it was a great meeting, you know, all the years, and we know a lot of what he's doing. In the meantime, a senator named Carl Grandnick forwarded the letter that he was in support of the name change, I will talk to that, I'm not sure if the district received it, I can forward it. Second, there was a question asked, and we would like to ask the administration, you don't have to obviously answer now, whether it's feasible for students to actually advocate for the name change, I know there are legal issues with that and educational issues with that, but there are opportunities, that was suggested that it could be a class project that's required anyway to write about a certain topic or to advocate for a certain topic as part of like making a case for something in, you know, a language arts class, and maybe they can write about why they think the name change would be good, and send those letters to the state, he's considered that as an option, or involving students in putting together a video that they produce themselves, as students could do that, so the second area to investigate, the committee, you know, just came up with these ideas that we want to run by you. Finally, everyone attended ISID ESSA, which is Every Student Succeed Act, went to regional meetings, we had gone to Rockland Bosties in the spring, early spring, received letters of thank you, and announces the next phase, and I'm sure the administration's aware of the next phase, but we would like our community and parents to be aware as well that there will be something, meetings in May and June where public comments are invited and public participation is invited in order to evaluate the plan, the ESSA plan, before it's submitted to the federal government. So we would like your help, it would be great if, you know, this can be posted somewhere visible, and we can advocate and post on social media to invite public participation. The complaint is a lot of the standards that I put, just like on Common Core standards we put out, are not easy to understand for the light person who's not an educator, so perhaps some teachers have showed interest in possibly even meeting with parents and explaining what the standards that you stand that are being proposed are saying or are doing, how they're different from Common Core, and how they're better or worse in certain areas, so if our teachers are willing to do that, that might be very educating to us parents who are not educators in order to take advantage of that period of time and we can get feedback. And finally, our next, our last meeting for the school year will be in May, we'll announce it soon, to wrap up, we're not inviting a legislator to this one, we're trying to kind of conclude what we've done throughout the year and make a plan for this summer, and come back with recommendations for the board on what we think we should do over the summer. Thank you.
Any questions? The only, the only question I could, I just want to go back to what are the three topics that we were advocating for, school tax collection, foundation aid, what was the first one?
It was the charter schools and the tax charges, which really did a takeoff, yeah, nothing, so these are all included, yeah.
I know, and it's wonderful to hear all the things that, you know, Calucci is doing, but I want, I kind of want it to be driven by us to a certain extent.
Right.
Not a lot of list of what he's doing.
So everything that we advocated for in terms of the school budget, the focus was on the state budget, so that is concluded, so now it's time to move on to other items, like focus on the tax collection bill probably, and we need to start with new initiatives now.
Right, so you're saying, so the three topics that's an initiative, well, you originally had like twelve topics.
Right.
And we narrowed it down to three, so of the balance of the nine or however many of them, I don't remember, but of the balance, are we looking at those, like, I just, like, the committee should, should come with a final report, final recommendation, do all their work, we have multiple meetings, and then come up and present at one board meeting with final recommendations.
That's what we'd like to do in May, and that would be for the next period of time, what we want to advocate for, recommend we do, and then the board would approve for this group. But a lot of items in those dozen or more were, were state budget related, and they're done, you know, until the next state budget comes up.
There was some.
The tax collection was running around, and then there's the HR on the federal level, six ten, which is still open and not, not ruled out, so we can definitely, right, and definitely Congressman, you know, always is very aware and against it, but again, doesn't mean you don't have to be achieved, that you should still send letters.
It's true that we're focused on what we want, it's great to hear all the stuff, whatever, every, we've all been legislating to do it, but it is for me, it's like, that's great, and that's a solid, what do, what do we, what can we get from that?
I mean, it wasn't quite that he brought up PK, because that's relevant to us, the name change, he's going to, you know, help us with that, and the tax collection bill, which we really let them lay on.
That was actually one of the three, or even three.
Yeah, and that was one of them, yeah, yeah. So there's some overlap, but he's not totally off the.
Yeah, I just want to be, I just, you know, when you guys have finally come up with your recommendation of however many topics that will be, usually now, ready to, then come back.
So we're going to do that in the, in the next meeting, because we don't have that yet.
We'll have that to be picked by.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, so very good. Public participation, four point zero one, public participation as to any school district business, the session will last a half hour, again, please step up to the microphone, say your name, school affiliation, you have three minutes to address the chair, and again, student policy twelve thirty, fourteen hundred, before you do not make any specific comment towards, regarding any student or employee of.
I'm not hearing too well, is this a time that I can say?
Absolutely, step up, thanks.
I'd like to invite board members and everyone, for that matter, to the showing of a documentary film called Two Schools in Hillburn, it's going to be at the Cultural Lodge Center in Rockhead Rockland Community College on May the twentieth, there are two showings, one at five and one at seven, and just very briefly, one of our board members who has been involved in it, has been interviewed, Mr. Long, and I have to, I enjoy it very much, but tells the story of what happened here in Hillburn in nineteen forty-three. The original part of this building was completed in nineteen forty-three, and it became a junior, senior high school, and at the time, there were elementary schools in Schlesberg, Hillburn, Airmont Cherry Lane, and Schlesberg. What happened then was that in nineteen forty-three, when this school opened, there was room enough here for the high school, plus grades seven and eight, and it meant that there would be plenty of room now in the elementary schools to combine the two schools in Hillburn. One was, had been historically for a toll of color, and the other one had been for white children, and what makes this story interesting, very interesting, is that a servant marshal came to Hillburn at the time and helped to desegregate the school. So again, I would like to invite you to the showing of this premiere of Two Schools in Hillburn, the filmmaker is Joe Allen, and as I mentioned, both Craig and I will be in it, a number of other people, and we're looking forward to it, if you have any questions, let us know, Craig can answer them, I can too. The person, if you're interested in knowing, there's no admission fee, the person in charge of the reservation is Wiley Wood, she's the wife of Dr. Cliff Wood, who's president of RCC, and is going to be leaving very shortly, so she can be contacted at Rockland Community College, and it's, it's something that we're all looking forward to, and I think it's going to tell a lot of history, that we hope people don't forget, you know, how I feel about history, and just let me finish a quote that says this, that if you don't know history, you don't know anything, and you don't realize that you're a leaf, as a leaf, you're part of the tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you even have some information on our Facebook page? Some sort, so, what are the social media?
It has its own, its own page.
Thanks. Okay, any further, any further public comment? Okay, okay, nope, all right, Dr. Adams, do you have any comments? All right, at this time, Chairman Taylor wants to put your, Craig, on the board, all in favor, signify by saying aye, so your.
Mr. Donovan.